The Rotary Club of Columbus is a membership organization with a passion for service. Founded in 1915, we're one of Rotary's largest and oldest clubs worldwide. My name is Tyler Townsend and I have the privilege of serving as the 2019-2020 club president. We all know the challenges the coronavirus pandemic is posing. Our club has faced tough times, including two world wars, but this is the first time we've had to suspend our in-person meetings. So instead of meeting here at the Trade Center, we're going to meet every week online until it's appropriate to return. So whether you're a member or a guest, thank you for joining us today. We're happy that you're here. Welcome to the March 25th meeting of the Rotary Club of Columbus. Thank you for being here. Last week was our first meeting that was virtual only, and we missed seeing everybody at lunch at the Trade Center, but this is turning out to be a pretty good temporary solution. For those of you on Facebook, we've seen you already add comments. We hope that you'll chat with your friends online right now, and be sure to ask questions of your speaker, and we'll get to as many of those as we can. At this time, I'd like to introduce Cameron Bean to bring us the news. Cameron?
Thank you, President Tyler and fellow Rotarians. It's March 25th, and here's a look at your headlines. Congress ready to pass an estimated $2 trillion stimulus package aimed at combating the economic consequences of the coronavirus pandemic. Hours after legislative leaders in the Trump administration struck a deal. The Senate plans to vote on the Mammoth Bill today, though full text hasn't been released. The legislation will provide direct financial checks to many Americans, drastically expand unemployment insurance, offer hundreds and billions in loans to both small and large businesses, and extend additional resources to healthcare providers. Spain surpassed China's death toll from the coronavirus, and India implemented the world's most extensive stay-at-home order Wednesday, as the U.S. and a growing number of other countries took steps to absorb the worst consequences of the pandemic. Worldwide cases surpassed 435,000 Wednesday, and more than 19,600 have died, according to data from Johns Hopkins University. More than 111,500 people infected with the virus have recovered. In the U.S., more than 800 people have died, and several states are urging residents to stay home. The number of coronavirus cases there has surpassed 55,000, trailing only China and Italy, according to Johns Hopkins. U.S. stocks swung between gains and losses Wednesday after lawmakers and the White House reached the agreement on a $2 trillion stimulus package, extending what's been one of the market's most volatile periods in recent memory. Investors have been eager to see the government commit to further aid for the economy, as the growing coronavirus pandemic has shut factories, sent students home from universities, and upended travel for millions of Americans. The Dow Jones was up 573 points at noon today, and your weather forecast, sunny with a high of 81. And we'll end on this note. Late one night, a burglar broke into a house, and while he was sneaking around, he heard this voice saying, "Jesus is watching you." He looked around, and he saw nothing. He kept on creeping, and again, he heard, "Jesus is watching you." In a dark corner, he saw a cage with a parrot inside. He rolled his eyes, and he asked the parrot, "Was it you who just said, 'Jesus is watching me'?" The parrot replied, "Yes." Relieved, the burglar asked, "Well, what is your name?" The parrot said, "Clarence." The burglar said, "Well, that's kind of a silly name for a parrot. Who named you Clarence?" The parrot answered, "The same idiot that named the rottweiler Jesus." And that's your news.
Thank you, Cameron. Our club has a proud tradition of honoring a special military guest at each of our meetings from Fort Benning, and we're going to continue to do that for as long as we can during these times until we can resume in person. And today, Pete Jones will introduce our military guest.
President Tyler, fellow Rotarians, I have the great pleasure today of introducing Staff Sergeant Scott Sartan, who happens to be a 31 Bravo. So for those of you who don't know, we do have military police officers here at Fort Benning to try to keep us retirees and soldiers and staff online. But his main goal and function up there, working in the police detachment, is to help train those folks that you see at the gates, and also keep track of the training and work in our emergency ops center as required. Now, he joined the Army in 2008, but what you see here is somebody who's a third-generation soldier.
Yes, sir.
All right, so his father was an engineer.
Yes.
And his grandfather was an infantryman. So while we're not going to hold you not following your grandfather's footsteps, we're glad to see you continue to serve. Now, once he joined the Army, he has served in Kansas, at Fort Riley, Kansas, and then moved on to Korea, and then volunteered in reenlistment to go to Hoelfeld, Germany, which is a small spot of training ground in the middle of Bavaria. From there, he also actually deployed to Poland, and prior to that, he had served in Afghanistan. So you see somebody that has taken advantage of traveling around the world and representing our nation. So we're glad to have him here now at Fort Benning. He served for a little bit in our first ESFAB before moving on to the Garrison. And on behalf of our members, who hopefully are about 300 strong watching this virtually, we'd like to give you a couple of things. First of all, can't go without a challenge coin, so I'm going to hand you that.
Thank you, sir.
And then, you know, for your beautiful wife, Abigail, my question, your daughter, Abigail, who needs a babysitter so that you can take your beautiful wife, Rose, out, we have a passport for the arts. And I think many of you know that our nonprofits and arts industry has taken a downturn like everybody else. So hopefully, when they open back up, you'll have the opportunity to go to the River Center to see a performance with Rose, as well as the Columbus Symphony Orchestra, and go to the Columbus State Theater Department down there on the River Walk, some great student plays, the Springer Opera House, and of course, you can come back here to the National Infantry Museum and love to take you through the simulators, and you can train your wife, Rose, to shoot better than you can.
Oh, yes, sir.
So on behalf of all our fellow Rotarians, thank you for coming out this morning to the National Infantry Museum. We wish you the best and all the soldiers at Fort Benning. Stay healthy and keep training.
Thank you, sir.
Bonjour.
I would like to thank all the organizations here for this as well, and for the Rotary Club for helping recognize all the soldiers on Fort Benning.
Cool.
Staff Sergeant Sartan, thank you for your service to our country. On behalf of the 300 members in our club, we wanted to tell you how much we appreciate your dedication to our safety. Please pass along our gratitude to your fellow soldiers at Fort Benning. Our club has a tradition of service where we help a local high school in a career service day, and Cedric Hill will now tell us about this year's program.
President Tyler, fellow Rotarians, I'd like to welcome you to the beautiful campus of Georgia Washington Carver High School, where we held our annual Career Day festivities March 4th through the 6th. Here at Georgia Washington Carver, we had some great Rotarians that came over. We'd like to thank Principal Lindsay and Ms. Selena Banks, the Guidance Counselor from the Guidance Counselors Office, for their allowing us to be here. We'd like to thank our Rotary Club members, folks like Stephanie Payne with the Youth Orchestra, and of course, Lorraine Mann with the Library Foundation, Pastor Adrian Chester with Greater Bellwood Baptist Church, Rodney Close with Boys and Girls Club, Reggie Lewis with both Tesis and Cure Violence. We'd like to thank Bridget Downs with Columbus State University, and there were several others. But we really wanted to thank you for being a part of this, and we like to also pray that your families are well during this difficult time in our country and as our nation. And it's a little bit different coming to you in this format, but we'd like to say again, thank you for those that participated. Thank you for being a part of this club. Thank you for continuing through this most difficult hour that we have as a club and as a nation, and we look forward to seeing you again very soon.
Thank you, Cedric, and thank you to all the Rotarians that you named that volunteered for this important service, helping the students at the local high school. At this time, we recognize that the lifeblood of our club is our members, and bringing in new members is something that we're always excited to do. And at this time, past president Tripp Wade will introduce our newest club member. Tripp?
Good afternoon, President Tyler and fellow Rotarians. For those visitors that may not be Rotarians in our club, I was asked to introduce myself a little bit, and my name again is Tripp Wade. I'm the president and owner of Wade Cleaner, Wade Leonard Service and Color Mac Two, Impressed Specialties Company. I've been a proud member of the Rotary Club of Columbus since 1990, and had the opportunity to serve as president from 2006 to 2007. And it's always a grand honor to introduce a new person to our Rotary Club and give them the experience that I've had the last almost 30 years. So Michelle Mason is our new member we're introducing today. Michelle is currently the Senior Vice President of our local BVP. Michelle received her degree in Hospitality Management from the University of Central Florida. She began her career 29 years ago with the BVP and has served in various capacities to include CEO of the North Alabama BVP for 19 years. Michelle is widely known in the BVP system for her work on investigating some unique fraud cases, including one where she helped expose the tactics used by a ring of air duct cleaning scammers. This resulted in her participation in an investigative story with Dateline NBC. She was interviewed by national reporter Chris Hansen for the series The Hanson Files, which aired in January 2011. She has been involved in Rotary for 18 years as a member of the Rotary Club of Greater Huntsville. She is Paul Harris Fellow and was named Rotarian of the Year in 1996, and served as the club president from 2008 to 2009, and also served as club's foundation chair. So fellow members, help me join electronically. Michelle Mason is our newest member. Congratulations, Michelle, and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm excited to be a Rotarian again, and really looking forward to getting to meet everyone and getting involved as soon as, of course, it's safe for us to do so. So these are interesting times.
And we will reintroduce you again when we go back to having our regular meetings.
Sounds great.
Thank you. Michelle, let me add my welcome as well on behalf of our members. You're joining or rejoining the largest humanitarian organization in the world with 1.2 million members working to improve the human condition. So we look forward to getting to know you better, and we look forward to serving alongside you. So welcome and thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Before we introduce our speaker, I do have a quick announcement. So as many of you know, one of our club's favorite traditions is a monthly happy hour mix at a local restaurant. And during these times, of course, we're not able to do that in person, so we're going to have a virtual happy hour tomorrow evening from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. So you'll receive a link to a Zoom video conference call from the Rotary email. If you have not received that yet, then please contact the office. Everybody, prepare your favorite drink and enjoy some social time while we're social distancing. So we look forward to seeing you tomorrow, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. At this time, I'd like to ask Amber Clark to introduce our program.
Hello, fellow Rotarians. I'm here to introduce Dr. James Birdsong, who serves as Auburn University's Aviation Program Coordinator. He is responsible for all facets of the university's aviation program, to include teaching, research, and outreach. In addition to his administrative role, he also teaches junior and senior-level aviation economics and global aviation courses. Prior to joining Auburn University, James served in the U.S. Air Force for 20 years as a Command C-130 pilot, Headquarters Staff Officer, Academic Instructor, and Squadron Operations Officer. He has also held various positions in finance, operations, safety, system acquisitions, and strategic planning. He also has extensive international aviation experience. James is a graduate of the United States Air Force Academy, Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, and of course, Auburn University. He's originally from Houston, Texas, and he married his high school sweetheart, Barbara Justice. James and Barbara have three adult children who reside in California, Colorado, and Berlin, Germany. So we'd like to say thank you and welcome to Dr. Birdsong.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us, having me here. What's left of our department at Auburn, we're all working remotely. What I'd like to do today is just spend a few minutes to give you all an overview of the Auburn University Aviation Program, a little bit of the history of it, you know, where things are today and where they may go in the future. So Auburn University Aviation really began with the Wright Brothers when they came to the state of Alabama in 1907, and then again in 1910. Their first flight school was established in Montgomery, Alabama in 1910, which is the current home of Maxwell Air Force Base. And it's been documented they came to Auburn in 1907 to work with faculty on the redesign of some of their early transitional Wright flyers. Well, faculty tend to be kind of curious folks, and in the 1920s and 1930s, aviation courses, as the industry grew, started to pop up at Auburn University, and they were essentially aero admin courses, or what we might know as basically the business of aviation today. So there was a smattering of courses from the 1920s and 1930s here at Auburn, and then in 1938, the U.S. federal government, seeing the need to potentially increase the pilot pool, there was only 4,500 pilots in the U.S. military in 1938, knew that they pulled into wartime operations there in Europe and certainly the Pacific, and we know how the rest of the story went. There was only 4,500 pilots in 1938, so the federal government funded what's known as the Civilian Pilot Training Program. That program basically allowed any private or public institution that could train pilots to write a grant and submit the grant, and then go out and train pilots. And so in 1939, Auburn applied for that grant. They purchased what's known as the Auburn University Regional Airport for all of $375, completed the grant and submitted, and lo and behold, we got in the other flight training business with the Civilian Pilot Training Program. Our first class was in 1941. The first class showed up in 1941. The class graduated in 1942, and they ended up training about 1,100 pilots here in this timeframe for the World War II effort. Now, these pilots essentially got what today we would consider the private pilot certificate they could take off land, have the basics, and then if they were called to duty, then they would go on to advanced flight training in the military. After the World War, or after the effort ended here in terms of the Civilian Pilot Training Program, Auburn University ended up keeping the aviation program. And it's important to note here in our local area with Columbus and Auburn and all, the Tuskegee Airmen, Tuskegee Institute was part of the Civilian Pilot Training Program as well. And from a historical perspective, in terms of our nation's history, this program, the Civilian Pilot Training Program, ended up training 450,000 pilots that went on to serve in World War II. So it's quite an interesting feat and quite a piece of, or a chapter in aviation history in this country, but the program stayed at Auburn University after that and essentially morphed into a degree program. It stayed in the College of Engineering for about 50 years, and then in the late 1990s, it moved to the College of Business, and then of course, 9/11 happened, early 2000s, industry downturn, not a lot of pilot hiring going on, not a lot of necessarily positive things in the world of aviation going on in terms of business following 9/11. So the airlines started to get back on their feet about 2006, 2007, and then we hit the Great Recession. And then 2009, there were two accidents that basically caused us to rethink how we certified pilots in the United States. The first being U.S. Airways Flight 1549, the Miracle on the Hudson, with Soli Sullenberger. You guys are familiar with that story. They made a Tom Hanks movie about it, so it had to have a good outcome. Well, there was another accident in New York, basically a month later, Kogan Air 3407, which is the picture on the right screen. That accident was essentially a perfectly good airplane that got slow, five-mile final, stalled, killed everybody on the plane as well as the crew, and then somebody on the ground as well. So what they ended up doing is looking at, you know, this outcome with the Airbus 320, 155 people lived after losing two engines over New York City, and then a perfectly good airplane a month later that crashed, just got slow, stalled. And so the quantity of training and the quality of training that we provide to students and pilots and how we certify pilots in this country was reexamined. So what ended up happening is Congress changed the pilot certification rules for pilots after this accident, the accident in Buffalo, New York, and it's known as the First Officer Qualification Rule, Public Law 111-216, and it changed the pilot certification standards in the sense that used to, if you had a commercial multi-engine instrument rating, you could typically get a job with the regional airlines. So many of you all may have flown airlines like Atlantic, Southeast Airlines, ASA, which used to be known as Auburn Student Airways down in Atlanta. That was where you went to get your first job and didn't get paid very well, but that's how you built your hours, but you only needed 250 hours to essentially get a job depending on the hiring market. After that accident, they raised this First Officer Qualification Rules to 1,500 hours to be the minimum. And so the traveling public sees that and understands, well, the minimum flight hours to be a pilot are increased by a factor of six. We tend to like that in the sense of our safety and security, and we feel better about it. But one of the other things that they ended up doing was not only raising that limit up to 1,500 hours, but also said if you have a college degree with 60 hours of FAA-approved curriculum, you can actually get in the cockpit at 1,000 hours. And so that's called the 1,000-hour restricted ATP. There's also a version of 1,250 that's based on 30 credit hours approved by the FAA. So essentially, the theory is this. So if I get a college degree in aviation, I'm going to get to the airlines a year faster. And the thing is, is that you're essentially going to be seen as somebody that has a better set of filters in your mind that clearly is you're made to make good decisions. So the more education you have, the more things that you've studied, human factors, advanced aerodynamics and so on and so forth, the better decision-maker you're going to be up front with all those passengers in the back. And so with that, that changed the whole landscape for collegiate aviation as well as all aviation in the United States. So in 2017, the Auburn University Aviation Program moved from the business to what was then known as University College, which was a new interdisciplinary college, and then we moved to the College of Liberal Arts that same year, essentially when they reorganized all the colleges or university colleges, they put it in the College of Liberal Arts. People always ask, you know, what liberal arts has to do with aviation? And again, it's really liberal arts, the College of Liberal Arts is a very large college, has a collection of different programs in it, well beyond traditional liberal arts. So it's been a really good home for us, but to answer that initial question, it's really, it's decision-making, and again, human factors. We do a lot of research in the world of psychology and aviation, known as human factors, and so it was a natural fit. And we've been there for a couple of years, and it's been very good. So today, we essentially have a team of about 50 professionals, and again, our goal is to go out and make good folks, you know, folks that make a positive difference in the world of aviation in terms of what they do and what they bring to this global enterprise. And we do that through education, research, and outreach programs. Our two degrees are Aviation Management and Professional Flight. These are both degrees accredited by the Aviation Accreditation Board International, which is the professional accreditation group for aviation. So all of our students are either in one of these two degrees, and again, they're both bachelor or science degrees, although they're in the College of Liberal Arts. So the Aviation Management students, when they graduate, they typically go work at the airlines and the operations side of the house, or perhaps on the finance side of the house. Many will go on to work in airport management. The director of Hartsfield International Airport is an Auburn University graduate. She just retired and is actually teaching with us now. There's also a lot of folks that will go into manufacturing and sales. We've had students that, you know, Pratt &amp; Whitney down in Columbus, Airbus down in Mobile, and lots of other aircraft manufacturers, Gulfstream over in Savannah, Georgia as well. So some work themselves into the world of consulting, and then we typically have some that'll go off to join the military, and not just Air Force, but Navy, Marines, and Army as well. So we get quite an array of students that go into a lot of different fields based on this degree. Now, the Professional Flight degree is essentially, you know, just like the name implies, you're going to be a professional pilot. And this is kind of an eye chart here for those of y'all that can follow along, but basically, the sequence is you do your private the first year, you do your instrument rating the second year at Auburn, your third year, you're going to do commercial and multi, and then you'll become a flight instructor your fourth year. And then essentially, you have to get to 1,000 flight hours to be eligible to work at the airlines, and most students will do that as a flight instructor here at Auburn University. So the flow tends to be that they'll come to the Professional Flight Program, be here for four years, and then they'll flight instruct for about a year, building their time, and again, building those filters in their mind in the sense of when they leave here, they'll typically go fly some kind of regional jet, and you know, so the pathway is very quick for the students right now, given the rate of hiring. Now, all this has certainly changed a lot in the last several weeks, and I can talk more about that in a minute in the Q&amp;A if you have questions. But briefly, for us, we're about 20% women in our program in the freshman class, which is actually about double the number of women in the aviation workforce. We have about 500 students in our student body. About two-thirds of those are on the flight side, about a third are on aviation management. And again, we tend to be kind of tilted towards a lot of out-of-state students because there's not a lot of collegiate aviation programs out there, and we're kind of spread out all over the country. Some of our peer institutions include the Ohio State University Purdue, University of Dakota, University of Oklahoma. So we're kind of the big southeast school. Middle Georgia has a great program over in the central part of Georgia there as well. It's a fairly new program, but again, in good company, and again, those are all accredited. We have a large team of faculty and staff. This is a picture of our Airbus 320 STEM on the right-hand side. Captain Thompson is our Airbus 320 course lead, and again, is retired Delta captain with 30 years of experience. He's an Auburn aviation graduate from a few years back, but again, all of our folks share a lot of passion for aviation. All have backgrounds in professional aviation and then tend to come to higher education as kind of a second career, much like myself. So a lot of fun, a lot of fun with the students here, and a lot of great resources that we have. At the end of the year, we're expected to have about 40 aircraft in our fleet. We're going through a conversion right now. We'll have 35 Cessna 172s, which is the single-engine airplane we use for private instrument in the first part of commercial training. And then we have five Piper Seminoles, which are multi-engine aircraft. We have seven flight simulators in the new Delta Airlines Education Building. We have basically the starter STEM, which is the Frasca Mentor, and then there's a series of Precision Max AATDs, training devices. Then we have an Airbus 320 STEM that was part of a gift received from Delta Airlines a couple of years ago, and I'll talk about the building here in just a second. But again, with the, with basically, when you think of how pilots have been trained in this country over the years, the process is much more formalized now for those that are not going to the military side. Again, the collegiate aviation program is definitely getting a lot of looks from the industry because ultimately, the airlines know the quality of students that they're going to get, and again, to have these types of resources available at our university help us better prepare students. And again, I joke with the students, you know, all my professional goal is, is just to be able to relax when I get in the airplane and see you in the cockpit, but ultimately, you know, that's what we all want from the traveling public. And again, is to have trust in the folks up front, make good decisions, and again, we do that through our team here and our resources. And so a couple of other things I'll mention briefly, we do have a research effort here. We are members of two FAA Centers of Excellence, looking at gamification in virtual reality. So a lot of this tech, you know, the emphasis on tech, again, as we do remote working and all, you know, if we could train pilots remotely through virtual reality and some other things, you know, there's a lot of benefits there. And so, you know, obviously, you still got to fly the airplane, but again, to be able to deliver Sims and things like that at a different level, a lower fidelity level, but there's a lot of research being given to that area as well. We do a lot of outreach to prime the pump essentially for the workforce in the United States. We have a resident high school program or resident camps that we offer every year for high school students. They get to come spend a week here at Auburn University and learn about a lot of different facets of aviation. We work with the Air Force Junior ROTC Flight Academy. We've worked with the National Science Foundation, and also the Legacy Flight Academy, who has their connection essentially with the Tuskegee Airmen, again, working to increase diversity in the world of aviation out there, and make sure everybody has an opportunity to work in this industry. So on the professional education, we do have a UAS course, a drone course that we offer that's a three-day course that's very popular with a lot of folks. And so we, you know, we work in a lot of different realms besides just the four-credit realm with our students. We have eight different student organizations. This number has grown a lot over the last couple of years, has our enrollment. These range everywhere from National Honor Society-type organizations to different organizations focused on different segments within aviation to try to, again, kind of level out the demographics in the world of aviation as well. We have our Strike Wing Student Ambassadors who provide all our tours. They get to They get to represent Auburn at a lot of different air shows around the country to include Oshkosh and Wisconsin. And we have a national collegiate flying team that competes in regionals and then nationals, which will also be at Wisconsin this summer. And so, it's kind of like the NCAA, but it's the National Intercollegiate Flight Association, NIFA, that they compete in. So, again, lots of opportunities for students to get involved beyond just coming to class and all that, and that's the hallmark of an Auburn student, is they're going to, you know, not just come to class and all that, but they're going to develop themselves in a lot of different fronts through a lot of these different student organizations. The picture on the right is our new home. It's the Delta Airlines Aviation Education Building, made possible through a generous gift from Delta Airlines a couple of years ago. So, this is our new home. And again, we are part of the Delta Propel Program, which is essentially a career pathway program for pilots to leave Auburn University and be able to go work at Delta within forty-two months of graduation. Most of our classes are still on the main campus. We do want our students to have a good feel for the, you know, the entire university and not just be in the building. Delta building for four years, but, you know, so again, there's, we are just two of one-hundred-and-forty undergraduate degrees at Auburn. But again, you know, the students here get a well-rounded education in addition to the aviation, so which is, which is a real benefit in terms of developing future leaders in this industry. So, we do fly year-round. We fly in the summer, so if you've, again, been around Auburn, you know, lots of aircraft in the air, and so, you know, we stay quite busy year-round producing pilots. The on-ramps for the two careers are essentially for Aviation Management students. They typically work in internships between their junior and senior year. There are co-ops available for them as well, and we do get some that go on to graduate school. Some have gone on to places like Southern Methodist University to study aviation law and some other graduate school opportunities as well. On the right side, we have all our different career pathway programs. Most of the flight students here are going to have, they're going to know what airline, what job they're going to be in before they even graduate, just because of the rate of hiring in the airline industry. Again, all this has changed rapidly the last few weeks and is yet to be determined what the outcome of the coronavirus is on the aviation industry. Obviously, it's had a significant negative economic impact so far, but, you know, hopefully this will be a temporary thing for the airlines. Most of the students that graduate, if I'm a young professional just graduated, the starting salaries tend to be about forty to fifty thousand dollars, same thing on the flight side. And again, the salary potential there is, is, you know, I'll say could be off the charts, but basically, again, for instance, the CFO of Delta Airlines, Paul Jacobson, he's a graduate of the Aviation Management Program. So, there is a lot of opportunities to get out there, you know, and get involved and get yourself into leadership positions quickly in this industry. We have a long history of producing industry leaders. Again, been doing this for over seventy-five years, and we're extremely proud of all of our aviation graduates. There's over four thousand of them, and again, the number continues to grow every semester. And again, they all give back and help the future generation, or reach back and essentially help the next generation of students as well. So, it's very, very rewarding to see as faculty, and again, a lot of fun as well, somebody that loves aviation. Last thing I'll leave you with is essentially, you know, we try to have the, make sure the students have a very global perspective on aviation. It's a famous quote, "A mile of highway will take you just one mile, but a mile of runway can take you anywhere in the world." So, if there's any pilots listening to this, you know also that that depends on weight, pressure, temperature, and altitude, those kind of things. But, but the point is, it's a very global industry, and our students will graduate and they will literally work around the world and, which is truly, you know, from the human perspective, is a really cool thing to get to do. All right, so if you have any questions, I'm going to kick this over to, back to Amber here, and if you have any questions, feel free to pipe up.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and start with a question. So, obviously, we're currently experiencing a pilot shortage or have been for a little bit. With that going on, what kind of effect or changes has that had on Auburn? I assume maybe the Delta building was, was part of that. What other effects have you had from that?
Yeah, so essentially, there's been a very steady hiring and there's been a lot of industry investment in the collegiate aviation programs because the collegiate aviation programs, again, essentially, these, these airlines, they typically love to hire from military, but there's fewer military pilots being produced. So, kind of the next well they like to go to is collegiate aviation program. So, there's been a lot of investment, you know, not just in terms of just money alone, but again, time and mentoring and those kind of things, which helps, you know, when you think about it from the airline's perspective, the accident in Buffalo, New York, the airline didn't realize that the captain of that flight had failed two flight evals in his training. And so, if you think about that and think about today with these industry representatives coming in here and these partnerships, they're getting to know the students at an early age and help mentor them, and they, they essentially know what they're going to get with these students. And so, so essentially, the marriage between industry and the students has helped in the sense, basically, increased the quality of the students coming out, but also the number of students coming out, because the pathway to go to become a professional pilot has not always been extremely clear. So, so it's, it has helped immensely.
Absolutely. So, you did mention Middle Georgia. They recently had sent out a request to add satellite airports for their flight training. Is that something Auburn would be interested in possibly?
Something we're definitely looking at is...
Plugging the Columbus Airport.
We're definitely looking at that as well. We have grown a lot. We've almost more than doubled the last about four years here, so we are definitely looking at that. There are some benefits to that in the sense that, you know, you can operate under one certificate under the FAA and then have multiple satellites. And so, yes, and so, we are definitely looking at that, and there's a lot of two-year schools in the state of Alabama that would like to partner up with that. So, we do have folks that go down and do, they, you know, they work the pattern down there at Columbus sometimes, so.
Get them all the time. And I know you said it's kind of up in the air, but do you have any insight as to maybe some of the effects the aviation industry is going to have with this virus going on?
It's definitely, you know, there's, I mean, it's, it's tough to see, again, just how fast this whole thing has impacted the industry. I think the, you know, they're, I know in China again, you know, they're starting to fly domestically again, which is a good thing. So, hopefully here in the United States, it's, you know, it'll definitely probably come to, close to a stop, it sounds like, but on the backside of that, hopefully grow and get back to what it was doing before. I know that Delta and other airlines have announced that, you know, they're parking a lot of jets and, you know, cutting capacity by about seventy or eighty percent. And so, you know, I hope the long-term effects out of this, again, should the country not go into a, you know, elongated recession, you know, will hopefully just be temporary. In the sense of aviation professionals, again, the workforce right now tends to be an older workforce in the world of aviation, so I still think there'll be a lot of great opportunities for young folks coming in. But again, anybody that's worked around the aviation industry knows that, you know, that this, this, these things happen at times, and again, you know, you learn to weather, weather them, so.
Absolutely. Does anybody else have any questions they want to post in the comments? Otherwise, I think we'll wrap the questions, maybe give a minute. I don't see any on there, so thank you very much. We appreciate having you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Amber. I appreciate it. Wonderful to be with you all.
Amber, thank you for moderating. Dr. Birdsong, thank you for your time here today. Thank you for your expertise and your insight. It's great to know what an incredible resource that we have so close to us here in Columbus, and I hope that we'll have a lot of students being sent your way. On behalf of the club, I'm proud to, to donate a book to the Columbus Public Library. It's a children's book that will be donated in your honor and inscribed with your name in recognition of your time here with us today. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to invite Michelle and Trip back into the conference at this time.
Hello, President Tyler. We're back.
Trip, and I think Michelle is making her way back. I want to apologize to y'all. I understand that we did not have you on the video earlier, so we just wanted to welcome you face-to-face. Michelle, I was just saying that I want to apologize, we didn't have the video up when we were introducing you.
Oh, okay.
Just wanted to take a moment to welcome you face-to-face.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glad to be here. Thank you.
So, thank you all for joining us today. Next week, please be back. Our speaker will be Dr. Alicia White, who is a physical therapist. She worked ten years at the Intrepid, at the Center for the Intrepid at Brooke Army Medical Center outside of San Antonio, Texas. And she spent that time working with amputees from both the military and civilian sectors. And she helped, she worked in the program that helped all of the amputees that wanted to run again, learn how to do that, both recreationally and some of them competitively. So, please join us again the same time next week. Thank you, and at this time, we are adjourned.